I have tried to call.
He will be.
I'm just trying to call.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, yeah.
I'm trying to call.
So you know, I can probably, oh, you're secretary. I can probably.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
No, they don't tell me.
I'm the secretary.
They kind of draw me.
Two weeks. When I tried to call him, I got that hurt. Yeah, it was two or three days. I tried to.
Yeah.
See now, they had to put down like twenty nine days. They didn't. He's house.
Brother, no one again. Yeah.
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 I think so.
I think so.
Janice.
I'm sorry. All right. I'm.
Yeah.
It's your best time.
Yeah.
I would imagine.
Probably.
With the stores.
I'm trying to tell all these.
It's just like.
Yes.
Because of the mass cost.
Actually, most are amazing.
But not just.
Yeah.
But I have to tell you. When I had my truck payment, it was over. I shot my truck. My truck. I was going up. Tried to stop and drop the tires, drop the. This age truck is this nice. You guys. If you talk to this guy, just to. I see the store. She don't. But they can't just go. Please drive.
Well, it's.
Well, it's. All I have to do.
Well.
Pretty annual.
No, true. I'm not. I read everybody and I'm going to buy me a garbage truck. I still need my garbage truck. That's why I got more. I got more. I said, I get a garbage truck. I'm going to play tax. I'm going to challenge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's five thirty, so we will call the roll of their. Call together the Loudoun County Regional Planning Commission. Would you stand with me, please, in flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Brian Bright.
Here.
Jim Rooks.
Here.
Todd Kennedy.
Here.
Keith Buckles.
Here.
Pam McNew.
Here.
John Napier.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Jimmy Williams.
Plan Agenda items, A, if you're following along with us, has been removed. We will drop down to B, placing sign on property of existing subdivision applicant Eloy Garza, tax map zero fifty, parcel one ninety six point zero zero, located one 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 thirty Vonnor Road, R one suburban residential district, District One. Is Ms. Garza here?
They're supposed to have a representative. This for us, a sign on Vonnor Road is a representative here for that?
Make a motion, we table it.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. We will discuss it in September. County Commission action on planning commission recommendations. Jim, anything to add?
We don't have anything to add, no.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to approve the minutes? I think we need to.
Oh, we did not do that.
Two months. Too much for the minutes, yes.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve those minutes of the previous two months?
So moved.
Had a move and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. They are approved. Dropping down to number five Coast Department building activity summary for July twenty twenty three. Jim?
Don't have anything to additional there.
I doubt that I will open up the floor any additional public comments on the meeting here this evening. Update from the Planning Department.
Just letting y'all know, we've still not heard anything back from the ETAD as far as our workshop items for the changes to zoning.
Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion to this meeting being adjourned?
So moved. Second.
Move and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
That's a good.
You don't have to agree. Stay here. It's a very.
Blowing sheriff down on two.
Yeah. I know four. Electric.
Not a bit. We just got a ten.
Five.
Everything. You know, they're saying not. What?
I'm not. I'm not. They want to. You talk about fury of mother nature. We together. I can't. It's scared.
You was it, huh? Didn't hurt.
Somebody stopped enough vehicles. There's the.
Over you.
I am a burn guy, but also burn shit.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Ready? Call the Loudoun County Board of Zoning Appeals Order. Uh, roll call.
Brian Bright.
Here.
Jim Rooks.
Here.
Leon Shields.
Here.
Mike Waller.
Here.
Anybody that's going to speak on any subject or anything in this meeting, they stand, raise their right hand or feet after me. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you may give in the cause is now pending before this commission be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help you God.
Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody read the minutes from last meeting?
Moved to approve.
Have a motion approved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Planned agenda items. Beret's request for accessory structure on property set front side yard due to limited backyard space due to drainage field. Applicant property owner Whitney Hawkins, located fourteen five two two Highway seventy east, tax map zero zero seven, parcel zero eight three point oh two, R one HUD, suburban residential district, District Five, approximately one point seven six acres. Whitney?
Hello.
How are you got?
So we have a twenty by forty barn that we are looking to be approved to put up. It's in the front plane of the house. Um, we, our contractor thought the front plane of the house when we built it meant not blocking that the house from the road. So we built this barn, um, that's in the front plane of the house due to a misunderstanding of what the word plane meant with our contractor. Um, we have, the barn is now five feet over the easement line as if we had to move it because it was our, our neighbor's property. So we moved it, uh, to be in compliance with, uh, the five feet easement.
So Jim?
Do you have the letter that I sent in that explains?
Where we got it?
The whole situation, or should I read that to you?
No, I ain't gonna say it. What?
So what happened is, is we had a complaint and they'd originally built a structure and it was approaching on the neighbor's property. And, and then they've obviously moved it. Uh, they didn't have a permit for the structure, which, you know, that happens. Uh, so when I went out there, they were taking that care some grading work, uh, to stop some erosion complaints that they had. And that's when I told them, you know, you're actually in your front yard. We can't issue a permit for this building without a variance. So the building sets to the, if you're looking at the screen here, you're on the front left of the house as you're facing, uh, Highway seventy.
It in the blue highlighted?
Yes, sir. Uh, so it sits kindly in the cursor area, maybe a little closer to the house where Phil has the cursor. So this property, if you look at it, it, there's no way for them to put it on the sides due to the width of the lot. And then, of course, you can't tell from this screen, but their backyard, you know, they have their fill line set, then it does go uphill. So they have some.
Drainage field.
They have some special land features that cause this to basically, other than adding it to the house, would be about the only place they could place the building. It's probably, what, a hundred and fifty feet or more off.
What is it? Is it a barn?
It's a storage building. It's a pole barn.
It's on agriculture. It is a building that requires.
You know, if it's a barn?
It's a building that requires.
Is there any contestment here that's against it?
Anybody got anything?
Any neighbors that's?
How'd you move a pole barn?
No.
We cut it off.
Well, yeah, we got a.
We cut the.
So you're, they're legal now, other than the front yard?
They're going to be five feet, yes, and they'll be, if they get this variance, we'll give them a permit, so they're all good.
You got a motion?
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion on it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is like that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your help.
Item B, Beret's request for accessory structure to be in the front yard applicant property owner Bobby and Pamela Rice, located thirty three fifty one Hackney Chapel Road, tax map zero three six, parcel zero nine eight point zero zero, A one agricultural forestry district, District Three, approximately two point seven four acres. Bobby?
I was the same way when we started building ours, I built a barn late and I didn't have no setbacks. But we also come back after I spilled the Mr. Jenkins' plot. I'd already applied for a permit and, um, we're just asking for a variance at seventeen feet off the side property line. You should have that in your paperwork that we submitted and also topographical issues where we had to, we couldn't grade out no more land in there. But it is a barn. But, you know, after speaking to him, he kind of didn't think so, so we're just asking for.
He don't think nothing of barn.
And we just asked for a variance. He didn't come out and beat with me and talked to me several times.
You got anything, Jim?
Just so we make sure we cover everything in this meeting. He does have a permit for this structure. He does have topographical issues as you get to the rear of his property. It goes uphill for the size of the building. This, it wouldn't be unusual for him, us to grant his.
And we actually shrunk the building from the original permit.
How much variance are you wanting? How much does he?
He just needs to be in the front yard. If you look at the way his property lays.
So he don't really need a line variance.
He don't need a line variance. He needs a, to be in a front yard, which is not unusual for this. But we do have two structures. We have the, the, the garage and then we have a, a, a pavilion or gazebo as noted on this. I'm not sure what the size of that building is. Do you know what?
Yeah, twenty to forty, but, um, you know, all that was stated was to get the proper permits and here it is.
Well, again, my, my letter has the regards to the buildings in. Should you do have a permit for your, uh, for your addition to the one?
Yeah.
And you have a permit already for that.
Yeah, first, first permit.
What we don't have is the, the, the gazebo or pavilion, whatever we want to call it. We don't have a permit. I couldn't issue a permit with it sitting there.
And it was, um, I think as we talked to, it's a, you know, non-permanent structure and it's, you know, all blocks. It's more or less a glorified picnic there.
Whether it is a, it is a real structure, so whether it's on a permanent foundation, so our regulations now allow if it's less than five hundred square feet, accessory building, less than five hundred square feet, not on a permanent foundation, you do not have to have a building permit. You're still required to comply with zoning, which means it has to sit in the side or the rear yard.
Is there any contestment here against it?
Yes, I believe it.
Great. Let's see what he says.
Um.
Letting up here and state your name. Tell us what you got.
I'm the owner of the property next door.
Okay.
Um.
What's your name?
Pardon?
What's your name?
Steve Spell. Um, there's a little story to it. Bear with me and I'll make relevance in the, I bought the property in two thousand and ten for a, I've got a disabled brother-in-law and sister-in-law that moved up from Ocala and I helped them get the property. Anyway, they get up here, they stay in it for three months and they want, they miss their youngest boy, so they want to move back to Florida. I said, just quick, claim it back to me. I rented it to Bo for, uh, thirteen years, um, back in two thousand and seventeen, I offered him, just selling the property. I told him I'd give him, he said he was interested. I got an appraisal and I told him whatever it comes in, less five percent for the real estate commission. Um, it was two hundred grand. He chose, he said it was too much. So, uh, May of last year, um, I decided I wanted to retire and sell the property. So I told him around May first of last year and he's, he said, how many days you give me to get out? I said, well, what do you need, thirty, forty, five days? And he says, well, I've got clients booked till whatever. So he calls me later and said, it's August twenty sixth. I said, how about the first week of September? So he, he gets out then and, uh, about a week after I talked to him the first time, telling him I was going to sell it, he calls me and says, well, you know, uh, I just talked to my realtor title agent and says, I've got this right away, um, going through your property right in front of your house. And then the next statement was, he says, my business is going to devalue your property because I'm going to have fifty to a hundred cars coming in and out of this driveway. And, uh, I said, man, you don't, I said, why can't you use your driveway you've got? And he said, well, it's too convenient, it's mine. And I said, man, I said, it was set up for you, for a family. It's not set up for a business. And he says, that's not the case. He said, so, um, October of last year, I go to put a fence up. His, his wife and his child come out there and, uh, raisin cane. And I said, well, look here, I'm not, I don't want any confrontation, I just want to sell my house. So I fixed it up. So I tore down the fence in that section and, uh, fixed up the house, put it on the market. I said, I just want to sell it and I'll be done with it. I don't want everyone to see you again. And so, um, January of last year, he puts this bar and that's how you describe it. It's a pavilion with a, a bar in the center of it with, uh, chairs around it. And, um, that adds on to the, um, signs of trying to devalue my property. Then he goes and puts this building up. He pulls a permit for it, but he's just like, I'll take a gamble, I'll put it where I want to, just to affect you, is my interpretation of it. So he just puts it wherever he wants and he's got this bar out there. And so I listed the property in March, I had sixty showings and everybody was saying, what do you got, what they got a bar run out here? Is this a business? And, um, multiple times, whenever realtors would come up, somebody from his property would come up and confront, and meet the potential customers and say, we got a feud going on with him. He's a jerk and, um, all of our fishing clients come up and down this driveway. So it's, uh, it's clearly this, this, this bar that he's put there and the building, it's all, he has the room to put them on the side or back of the property. He bulldozes out an area to put that building that looks just like what's behind on the side of it. And it's clearly he's done it to affect me. And he's got a perm, a permit for bed and breakfast to have three to four guests per night and he's running ten to twelve a night. He's converted this metal building into a little hotel. You walk into it, it's got numbered doors down both sides of the hallway. They've added a, a thirty thousand dollar addition on the back of it without a permit and it's a hotel. There's, sometimes there's ten vehicles in the, in the, uh, yard back there and there's people coming out at all hours of the night and day coming up and down that driveway. He doesn't have the courtesy to make them go down his driveway. That's perfect. And, um, I had two of those customers walk in my house last week, um, that, uh, they just walked in the house. I had a couple of guys staying there and they were like, what are you doing in here? I was like, we're here to stay. And I'm like, well, I'm not mad at them because they're, it's not maybe their fault because he didn't make them aware that it wasn't his property. And, you know, the crap keeps going on all the time like that. And I just, um, I don't see how you can operate a business like he's running, um, in a residential area. I'm trying to, like I said, sixty showings, if not one buyer and with the market the way it is, and it's a nice place. And multiple people have said it's because of the bar. You can see the bar right outside the front window, right past my property line. And, uh, it's, it's clear that he's doing it to devalue my property. And I haven't put it up, back up for sale yet because I'm in a good room.
I got a question for Jim.
Yes, sir.
What's this, this C item here?
But, well, we're going to finish this discussion.
Does this all tie together?
It is going to be, yes, sir.
We all go ahead and read.
Now, he's zoned agriculture, right?
Uh, A one or.
Can he operate a commercial fishing under A one?
Well, so, and, um, if we want to kindly address item C.
Let's just, just go ahead. Can we read it or is he such reading or by no one?
So item C, so what it is in, in conjunction with this, in part of the complaint, I've, of course, went to add in regards to this being a complaint and, and sent Mr. Rice, I probably, price a letter in regards to this, okay? So in the letter, you know, it was addressing, uh, the accessory buildings, uh, some additions without permits, uh, which we're trying to address now. He's got permits for the, the addition and a, the garage. We're addressing violation of setbacks on his buildings. But also we're addressing, the complaint is that there's multiple people using the facility, some which are his, I guess, his chartered guests, for lack of better words, his clients and some that are staying there and bringing their own boats and just leaving from there and using it as a hotel. Again, what he applied for in two thousand and sixteen was a special exception to operate a bed and breakfast on this property.
But now, can I say something?
Uh, yeah, that's fine. And I did leave y'all a copy of the minutes from that.
Was he limited under that special exception to?
The application, he has pointed out to me, the application doesn't have a number on it. What the application states, I wrote it somewhere, if I can find it. He filled out an application basically, uh, to operate a bed and breakfast that he was operating at the adjacent house previous, to operate a bed and breakfast. And then, of course, during the meeting, all I have is the meeting notes, it's which he said for his purpose of buying and having up to four fishing trip guests on the property.
But the reg doesn't specify anything other than?
Well, the regs doesn't specify a number of occupants, uh, and, and actually, I don't even know that a bed and breakfast is allowed in the A one zone.
That's what I was.
I believe it is. So we got a special exception, which actually during that time should have been a variance from the regulation to even operate the B bed and breakfast.
So he's legal to have a bed and breakfast, do you enable?
He is, he is legal by his, the special exception that we're giving.
And I also got one spell come to me in two thousand and thirteen to run a lodge there. You know, the time come on and he decided to sell. But every February we meet, we got a lease agreement that runs from February to February. So the reason I was able to stay to September, I could stay all the way to February. So what he's saying is false.
My curiosity is not necessarily about that civil dispute is.
Right.
Are we operating within the means of the reg?
And I've had.
Which is a hundred percent planning.
And I've actually had two bed breakfast licenses that have been in front of y'all, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and sixteen, and I got copies of them here.
The license come through this?
I remember the six.
Just, just, uh, the special exception. They did have one earlier out of Mr. Spell's house, you know, from whatever year. And then he moved it from that location to this one. So really, the only, the thing I'm asking this board to review is this, this come through the board for the special exception. And, and based off the information given that is present in the minutes, I sent him the notice, of course, that he was operating outside what the board heard and approved. I'm assuming again that the board made their decision to allow the operation of a bed and breakfast in the A one zone based off of the use that he stated, you know, I'm going to use it for my fishing guests. It's a B and B and I'm going to have up to four. Yes.
But it remind me, educate me, that's permitted in agriculture, but it's if he has a set amount of acreage. Is that correct?
I, I don't even think, I think a bed and breakfast is only allowed in the A one or the R one zone, but I've got the reg if you'll allow me a second.
And we also got paperwork where they was trying to sell their, their school in their B and B to the property is trying to be sold.
So what's the best way to clean it up? Rezone it to a commercial?
They, they would not get a commercial zoning in that area. I think, again, it's, it's a determination if we're operating outside what was presented to the B Z A. And, and in my letter, I just stated, you know, based on my minutes of review, that the confines of my opinion were to stay at four guests or less to be in compliance with what.
And that was in the minutes from the last time?
It is in the minutes that it was be up to four. That he stated up to four. Again, if he'd say that I'm going to have twenty guests, I don't know that it changes the board's decision or not, but nevertheless, that's not what was presented.
And that's like, in this minute here, it's not.
Yeah, first matter.
And it doesn't on my paper either.
Well, then this is, yeah, this is the minutes from that meeting.
Just say having up to four. So in, in truth and reality, how many do you want to house or how many do you house?
You know, it could be a good number and, you know, it is efficient.
So we're already over four?
Yeah, and, um, my neighbors, they're all here. They never ever once had a complaint. I got two of them, they'll decide me. It's three or.
It's not the front yard they're driving to either.
And we have a shared driveway easement too, which, which we had called it all the other day and the law told him it's a civil matter. But here's the driveway even to eat them, if you all see the driveway.
It's a civil matter.
Yeah.
Is the gazebo within the regs?
No. It is in the front yard.
It's thirty two feet off.
And, and there's a photo of that.
Yeah, he should do it.
It is, is, it is in the front yard, you know. Again, when you look at the, you look at the garage structure, it wouldn't be uncommon for a structure of that size to be necessary to be functionable for it to need a variance because of topographical and land issues. Uh, the gazebo itself, though, could be built in another location, could have been placed in another location and we're prohibiting him from having that, but, but it could have been a put in another location on the property if it was necessary.
And the way I read it, thinking A one, you could have the buildings and, you know, kind of set in areas, you know. And we got emails to where we reached out. We started on October, uh, twelfth of twenty two. It ain't just like we said, hey, we're going to do this and not get, ask for permits and hey, we got proof where we've emailed and we got the, the original permit that we started, so.
Regulations clearly state that accessory building has to be from your front door to the side or to the rear. I mean, it's.
But a barn in Loudoun County really has no setback.
Well, I don't, I don't really say that's not a barn or it's not a permanent structure neither.
It's, it's like, it's like covered roof structure.
Yeah, but it's.
So I'm guessing by you being here, you don't want to put it anywhere else except for your request tonight?
Yes.
No move in it? It's either you either want a yay vote or a nay vote?
So what happened was I was running a business that both, I was using both of them down in one area.
She's got something to say as well.
Hi, my name's Carl Wiggins. I'm Mr. Spell's realtor. I just want to add something here that, um, with the over sixty showings that we've had, clearly there were families that came in there that would, would have loved to have used that home for a residential home for their kids and for themselves. But on more than one occasion, there was hollering and he-hawing out there and it seemed to always ramp up when we had showings.
Remember, that, we ain't got nothing to do with that. That's a civil matter there. That's nothing to do with zoning. That's nothing to do with zoning.
Well, I guess my point is it, it's clear that it was put there to devalue his home.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, but that's, that's a civil matter. That zoning hasn't got anything to do with that. That's, that's a civil matter.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think, you know, I'm still stuck and I apologize, I'm still stuck on what's the true cap limit of residents for the night at the structure? I mean, can it go up to twenty five since there's no limit or we hold him accountable to the up to four that was in the minutes from the past week? And, and I know that's not what he's requesting on the building, but I, I think that's the elephant in the room as far as C is how do we assist the, the code office in, in the enforcement of the true special exception in the A one? Am I, am I getting that right, Jim?
Yeah.
Is that, is that a concern for you all to what his true number is?
So the R one allows rooming in boarding houses. There was a definition of that. Let me verify what I.
So side note that we don't have any regulation. What does fire occupancy say for the building? That would be more of a question to you. That would be more of a question to you. What's the fire marshal say?
You know, all, all, all they have two ingress and egress. They have smoke, smoke detectors, the only thing. And you know, the basically the, well, your first here on the bed and breakfast was, we only had two bathrooms at that time and now, you know, you got five of that.
You get in the building code, you're gonna get in a whole lot of different problems when you take it from a single family dwelling type structure to a multi-use building of that nature. You're talking more of a hotel motel rigs.
Well, that was called me by next question. You pay in lieu of tax money to Cedar County for housing?
Do I now?
In, in your setups, that you're housing multiple dwellings or multiple overnight guests, you paying in lieu of tax money to Cedar County?
Yeah.
For a hotel?
I'm sure my CPA keeps up with all that.
But it's, but where I'm going with that is it's considered a hotel tax.
A single.
Okay.
So the R1 is rooming in boarding houses. There is a definition of that. A rooming house is a building and accessories, there are two principal use designed adapted to provide living accommodations not more than six occupants having common cooking and dining facilities. A boarding house means a building accessory, there are two principal use designed adapted to living, provide living accommodations, not more than six occupants having common cooking and dining facilities. We don't have anything that says bed and breakfasts. What we have is rooming and boarding houses. And that is the definition of a rooming and boarding house. That's the closest thing I have in zoning. Of course, that's not allowed in the A1. So I'm merely referring back to the application, the minutes stated as to what was presented to the board at that time.
What's your recommendation for occupancy?
Well, that's kindly why I brought it to the board for them to hear this and to see this and feel whether they agree that, you know, they felt based off these minutes that the thought was that when that exception was granted, it was based off the premise that in this area, up to four guests would not be an issue.
So do we remake a motion? I know B is a different caveat, but do we remake the motion on C for special exception to define that for you? Is that what C truly is? You want a true definition?
Yeah, so I think C is for y'all to either, as administrative review, to say you agree that the, the minutes stand that it was for four and that's the way y'all feel and agree that, or to say, I don't believe so.
This chairman, I yield, I'll be quiet.
Well, I, I don't. If the minutes, the special exceptions we granted was for four, I don't, I don't understand why we're wanting to change it. And you're saying you're having more than four?
Well, I mean, yes, sir. I ain't gonna lie to you. But they also, they're selling the same property as Airbnb and then me and him spoke Airbnb is a different thing too, so.
They put on there that it could be used as Airbnb.
Really, all we're looking at is what the minute says up to four.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter what's room board, bed and breakfast or hotel. It says up to four. And that's four occupants, not four rooms.
Yeah. And then, like you said, certain families counts as one if it's more than. Yeah, the definition of family, it's, you know, you can have as many, when you look at a single family dwelling, you're talking about as long as they're blood related, there's no limit on that. But when you start dealing with occupation of building that's not single family, if they're non-blood related, it's maximum five people.
I think the misfortunate part is if we rewrite the whole description, we're getting outside of what the minutes say. The minutes just take four. Doesn't specify family, non-family. It just says four.
And there's one or two people living full-time there.
Nobody's living there full-time. You can ask my neighbors. And you could come out and look.
I, I don't think the fact that if he and his wife or his son live there is an issue. It's set, it's a bed and breakfast, they need to sit four guests.
That's right. I, I agree with that. I'll make a motion for C.
We probably need to do it in order for me though.
Okay, we're gonna do it in order?
Just for the minutes.
All right. I'll, I'll stand.
What do you think, I'm beat?
So is the variance because of the setbacks?
It's the variances due to the buildings.
In the front?
Two buildings in the front yard, yes, sir.
And having to ask for variance for both buildings?
He, he's asked for variance for both. I would, I would say this, that if y'all felt one was, was a special land feature that constituted a variance, you can grant it to one and not the other, the word however you want to. It's put on here under one agenda item. But you do have two buildings, one be in the garage and one be in the, the pavilion or gazebo.
So my, my curiosity is, if you've reached out via email and we've been discussing this for a few months, what was the guidance that we give in the term that you built this?
Well, see, nothing was ever mentioned until the complaint come on the, it's supposed to be anything under five hundred square foot, the setting area is supposed to have no permit, it's built temporary.
So your emails about the gazebos never gave approval?
About the building.
Okay.
And never had an issue with the, with the, it was supposed to be, you know, non-permittable out.
The garage, the garage has a permit. There's been, never been an inspection call where I have a permit for the garage.
So what's this over, the gazebo?
No, it's over both of them. The garage is built without per, without inspections. It's in the front yard. And the gazebo.
How did it get a permit?
You submit us a compliance site plan. At the time of footings is when an inspector looks for setbacks and footing inspections and things of that nature. We've never conducted a building inspection on the project.
So there's not an official CO for occupancy either?
No.
But there should be by the reg?
Yeah, by the reg, you have to have a CO document about the structure.
What's accessory structure he's talking?
We're talking about the garage now.
It's a barn. It's just got, we got the, we got all our, we got the tractor, bush outs. We actually had Satterfield, he come out there and looked at it too and you know, that's the first thing he said it was a barn.
But it's got a concrete floor and like the.
The, the, the use of the building is what determines its occupancy classification. Agricultural accessory buildings for agricultural use of the property. Those do not require permits. Property is a bend.
So it's seventeen foot?
Yeah, he don't need a variance for setbacks. It's just sitting in the front yard, the garage is.
And see, to me, the front was, cause I got the driveways like four hundred foot back there. I was thinking the front was where you pulled in. Then we didn't get it.
I don't have a problem with either building there if they were where they're supposed to be by regulations.
And it's two and a half acres, your parcel is?
Yeah, two point.
A little bit greater?
Two point seven, probably.
So you have other room there, it's a strong?
Well, it goes uphill.
Okay.
He knocked out a hill just like what he would have to knock out the other one too.
Then we had to put a retaining wall.
It could have easily been made with the, those that they had there, no problem.
What's your recommendation, Jim?
Well, like I stated, I think the garage itself is not in common for us to grant a variance based on its size and location, how you have to use a structure like that and it does slope uphill behind that building. I believe the gazebo, the B and whatever you want to call it, could have been placed in another location on the property very simply. It's not as necessary as a garage. It don't have the same functions where you're trying to pull in and out of it for, for grade. And, and there are other locations that it might have been able to be placed on the property.
I make a motion with Jim's recommendations.
Second.
So, so we're, we're recommending that if we approve the.
Prove the shop, but the gazebos would have to move. It's not that it can't have it, it just can't be in the front front.
Right.
Okay. And that's the motion, then second.
I got a question on that. I went down and looked at it. And the garage is more in the side yard than it is the front yard.
It is. It sits forward of the building and he did a very nice drawing that, that kindly shows how that lays. And when you get these odd shaped lots, it, it does get a little.
It's one of them.
It is a very odd shaped lot, yes, and, and the way it is. And, and his detail that he give you is very descriptive.
We got that.
But now we're saying that the garage is fine.
I understand that, but I'm arguing that the gazebo's fine.
Okay.
Ain't nothing wrong with gazebo.
This is the house is lightly shaded.
Yeah.
And the garage and the gazebo, so that's how it ended up in the front yard.
Where do we get that? I'm curious, this is something earlier that was said. Why would you object to him building a fence on his property?
He would block, not building a fence, he would block in our shared driveway.
He, he's, he's on the, the D, on the shared driveway agreement, he has twenty-five feet. I was leaving twenty-five feet and.
There's actually, here's the thing, there, there's no footage on it.
Well, there, there is the widest point of the driveway according to the map is twenty-five feet. And I was giving him twenty-five feet. The driveway agreement and the map clearly shows it going in a straight line. True thing. So I was going to the twenty-five foot mark and fencing in the remainder of my yard. Last, week before last, I was out of town. I had a couple guys putting the fence up to, to go, I was gonna go twenty-six feet just to be safe. And three vehicles come there, drove on my property and blocked my guys from doing their work. And then they called the police that I was building a fence on my property and they stopped them.
Now, he was trying to go from point A to point B. They had the ropes and the boards.
Like we said, that's all civil.
That's civil.
Yeah, and that's okay. I'm just explaining, but.
But on the shared driveway, you can't block me. You put the gates up and tried to block.
Well, there was no lock in the gate.
Mr. Chairman, we have a, we have a motion on the floor.
We're not here to talk about that.
But you all.
Is there any questions?
Any more, y'all got anything? I will say.
I.
I oppose it. I think this gazebo's fine. A motion, Jerry, you're gonna have to move your gazebo.
And then how does that relate to the, for Max? Is that?
Well, that's item number six.
Well, you got to that.
Okay.
You might got anything on C?
He's starting to make a motion.
I did. I believe going by the, the minutes from two thousand and sixteen, I think due to the size of the property and what was presented, especially with the minutes that we, the, the special exception was granted for up to four fishing, four fishing trip guests as stated. I think that's what we felt was appropriate for this size and in consideration for, you know, the driveway and the access to it and without encroaching, you know, on, on neighbors. So that would be my motion that it stated is up to four.
I got a motion.
Second.
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 Any more discussion? All the favor say aye.
Aye.
All was like what? That's it.
I read down there right below that, it says Napier made the motion and Brooks seconded just before that said request. So you two were, were here?
Yeah. Item D, special exceptions to live in RV while constructing new home on property. Advocate property owner Jeffrey and Barbara Bale located eighty-five, eighty-eight Callaway Road, tax map zero, five, six, parcel one, six, eight, point, zero, zero, eight, two, RE, Agriculture, Forestry District, Single Family, Exclusive Overlay District, District Four, approximately five point five acre, eight acres. Y'all done up there. Tell us what you got.
Well, it came to our attention after, I think we had some mud issues on the road that I think some of our neighbors were concerned about. And then the inspector came out to, to take a look at that. He noticed that we were, we had an RV parked on our property. We purchased the property and we closed on the property, I believe in April. And we discussed the property with the realtors about any restrictions on the property as far as RVs. We, we spoke in length about how we were going to take the RV that we currently lived in. We've been living in the RV for the past three years. We're ready to get out, believe me. And we had told everybody that we were planning on doing that. We found utilities put in. We are permitted with our septic. We're all good there. We've had our utilities pulled in by the Loudoun County Utilities Board, water, septic, and now electricity. And we moved on the property with the RV in late June, I think is when we got there. And so we're asking for a variance. We, we're working now. We have a sales contract with Clayton Homes. We're getting ready to put a mobile home onto the site. Like I said, that's our, the RV's been our home for a while, so we didn't really have any other options. We wanted to be there during the construction and, you know, it's very tidy. It's, it's a newer RV. It looks pretty nice there.
When you, you got a contract with Clayton?
Yes.
When you get Clayton's built or on the side, are you gonna move out of your RV?
Yes, in the fastest possible.
How long do you need?
We will probably sell it as quick as possible.
So we're a couple of weeks out from the site inspection by the Clayton folks. And then, once we get that site inspection cleaned up, figured out what all we need to do, we plan on starting to pull the permits and we're hoping to have a house on the site. We wanted to beat winter, but I'm not sure we're gonna make it.
The, the, the soonest we can have a, a residence on that property and able to actually live in it is probably sometime in January. But that's just wishful thinking. I'm not sure it'll go that quick. So we're just asking for some more time. We don't have anywhere else to live. So, and probably can't afford to, to pay for an RV park and do all of this too. So that's why we're asking. If we keep a tiny place, we keep the mud out of the road, which I have went through extensive activities with bales of hay to control it. And I think we're about ninety-five percent, unless we get them on soon, so.
Well, we threw the test yesterday, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, like I said, the only reason they.
Pretty much straight up.
Yeah, yeah. He's, once I got ahold of him to, to address this mud situation, then he come in and we discussed the RV and they explained their getting a mobile home out there and I told him that, that in the past, y'all have granted these variances for about a year for them to be able to do that to get in a new home.
Is anybody here in opposition? By, anybody else got anything?
Motion for a year. They need more time, they come back.
Second.
One year. Thank you very much.
Thanks, appreciate it.
All the favor say aye. You got a year. If you don't get done, a year come back.
If I don't get done in a year, he's in a heck of a lot of trouble.
Aye.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else got anything?
Move to the other chair. That's seven to motion.
Public comment?
Oh, Mr. Brooks. You got some public, you got public comment?
This gentleman will do. For a public comment.
All right, stand up tall.
Couple things, gentlemen. Sorry to take a few time. We're here to do a follow-up from last month. Decision you made on two thousand and nineteen across the mud, you guys voted, no dog training, no breeding. Are you gonna stand behind your word, no dog training? I can please hear me out. Civil is on the side. I'm asking about the dog training. Are you gonna enforce no dog training?
Jim, we told you last month, Jim went out there. He didn't see any dogs. He didn't see no permanent buildings.
So, okay, I was asked.
It's out of our hands.
Okay, but I was asked by the mayor, Buddy Bradshaw, he got the county attorney, letters being made out. Okay, I don't know whether, did he talk to you today?
No, sir.
Okay, well, anyway. There's clearly, I've taken a lot of pictures. Of dog training taking place here, okay? I'm asking you all, are you gonna stand behind your decision that you made back in nineteen? That you guys said no breeding or no dog training? And please, hear me out, please. All right, I've got pictures of dog training going on. They have a dog employee that comes over there daily, ten o'clock in the morning, stays till seven o'clock at night.
Is it them Belgian dogs? Is it them Belgian dogs?
It is.
Them dogs, he left this facility. Them dogs, he left his facility, I'm sure, I'm sure you all know Jim Wilson, you all know Jim Wilson?
I ain't never heard of him.
Uh, he broke, he broke, and you can vouch for this, right, you know?
I can vouch for anything except for, I've done some research on it and been kinda following it.
He broke his verbal contract where he was at. He's openly put on his page that he start no, and he has moved everything there. All I'm asking is you guys stand behind what you voted on in two thousand nineteen, that you voted no breeding or no dog training.
Sir, when, when Jim, no, to hear me out there, when Jim Jenkins comes back to us and says that that is going on, then we'll take some action on it, until then, we ain't gonna do nothing.
Oh, come on.
Well, I mean, man, who said he been out there?
Mr. Brooks, I got one last thing, one last thing, please, I'm asking you to publicly in front of this board, and what people we have in this audience, for your actions at the last meeting, how you got hostile, let me finish, please.
I got hostile.
Let me finish, it was all recorded.
Go ahead, spit it out.
I had five people call me between that night and the next day, and could not believe that you talked the way you did to this woman, and then told me publicly, not only once, but twice, to shut up, did you hear that, Mr. Shields, you witnessed?
I'm telling you again tonight, it's time to be quiet, it's a civil matter until Jim Jenkins comes to this board.
I'm asking.
I'm telling you, there ain't no asking to it, I'm telling you, until he comes to us, we ain't gonna take no action. You can call me, tell me, do whatever you want to me, it don't bother me, and I'm telling, I ain't apologizing for nothing, I'm telling you the truth. Anybody make a motion with you, Jerry?
I am going to go to the county commission.
Got a motion to Jerry, second?
I'm the mayor, and the county commission, and if you're moving this board.
Call the mayor, clearly. We're not police.
I got bunch, I got bunch for you, sir. Those are the minutes from June, July.
The definition of a boarding, training, kennel, housing, that's what the definition is, they will use.
Uh, yes, today is the A.
When you call it, uh, that was we were.
I'll tell him.
That's the one from June, sir. And this is the one from June, I think.
Mr. Definitions of time.
Now, they've been regularly advertised.
Still is, and so when you read those definitions.
They're advertising all the different things down there, saying that we get rich starting us. It's what they taught me about, that there's a special, there's a special thing that we can see.
Those are everything you license ticket up.
That's why I asked you. Somebody told me that there's a thing in the rig that.
It doesn't matter. Yes, you were proved up to not, 'cause I didn't have a breeding.
That's why I asked you. Since then, I've been watching.
It was all day, and that's halfway through that, that background. All I can do with. Just a little bit of screaming.
Yes, my take together fits with the group, and I love it so much, I take it back together.
We had a lot of neighbors have great ones, so, but it don't, your prayer lives in church.